Would continue also to benefit each one of us. We ask O Lord your divine presence to be in our midst, and your wisdom Lord to be upon each one of us to enable us to comprehend the lesson of God. And give us your grace Lord to live this out in our daily living, how to apply in a practical way, especially to our families O God. As we go on O Lord, we pray for the others, you may hasten O God their footsteps, enable them to catch up the lesson we have today. We entrust to you the whole duration of this lesson, of this discussion O God. We entrust to you everything in the mighty name of Jesus our Lord and Savior. Amen and amen. Okay, still we are in our main topic about God's perspective on every family. It means ngan atong pamilya nga naakaron dili random no nga kuwan lang kanang wala sa plano, kundili ang gino umuinag plano ni anang tanan no igoratanag, participate, igoratanagsunod ni ini. So it's a very comforting nga di ay ang naitabu sa tuang kinabuhay sa mas pagminyo, it's a plan of God. That's why ah dili po kita maguol no how to handle our family because the grace of God will also be with us, to empower us because as we are doing this, we glorify the Lord. Okay, we are now in Lesson 8. Ruth Bel Graham said, "A good marriage is the union of two good forgivers." Wow, can indot no? Ang maayong nga kami niyon, ma o ang panaghiyo sa union, sa duha ka maayong mapasailo. Good forgivers. So isa ka butang no nga ginatawag na susi sa ginatawag ah reconciliation is forgiveness. Subok kayo ng dunay mga tao nga wala silang bokabilari ang pagpasailo. Ang anaano si ilaha revenge no balos balos good. Apan tungod kaya nagbasi kita sa Diyos nga mapinasailon, then dirikita mo in line no sa ginatawag na concepts si Gino oh na agayu di ay ang forgiveness. Kay kita dati nakasala ta sa Diyos, apan ang Gino oh nagoffer of forgiveness nga ni sa tuwa. Sumona ang atong pasihanan nga magiging forgiving kita sa atong isik katawo, labing na din na sa family. That's why our lesson today nag ingon healing of relationship in the family. Healing no of relationship diya sa pamilya. So this is ah about the concepts that lead to healing. Atu ang pagkatunan karoon amma konsepto nga mulid mugiyah kiningat to sa kaayuhan healing no sa relasyon. Resort kayo ang ginatawag na ah relasyon no kung dunay problema. Dunay mga tao dunapik culture no samu ang culture sa akong papa, akong papa Litinyo oh taga-Saudan Liti. Oh nga aman ang realize nga sila, ang ilahang batasan oh wag mahimo culture. Luoran, dali mang luod. O niya, ang ilahang pagkaluoran mudangan og tinuig. Do kay kay maulian. Ang uban pag yod na subra kanang kanang ginatawag na sorry. Madinom tanon, manuban nga tamnan og kawayan no? Kung dili mamatay ang kawayan, yung kita no dili siya makikulay, o niya kesinture biya na mamatay ng kawayan. Pagka nalang yod. So iyan na ang mga batasan or culture. Okay sa tahuhano na pero kung kita nagtuon na si Gino oh, o nakabalot as character si Gino oh nga mapinasailon, mahikogmaon, then ato na siyang adopay dapat muliwat ta sa Diyos no ngatong amahan ya mga batasan. So amatag isa muliwat, kaya nagclaim siyang anak sa Diyos, then managsama kita gbatasan nga bag oh. Og ang batasan nga naa sa tuwa mapinasailon, kung naa dali ra kaayo no ma kuwan makatabang sagetaw na reconciliation sa mga relasyon. Okay so. O sa man ang mga realidad diya sa pamilya, number one ma okini siya, hurts are real experience inside the family. No hurts, ano kini mga masaktan bitaw ka no? Nasakitan ka, na stumble ka, no na hurt kapag ayaw, mga real experience ni siya sa pamilya. Bisag unsa ka labing ang family, grabe ang tay family tais niya na agyuning hurts no nga may experience. So hurts are real experience inside the family. We must acknowledge that each member of the family experience hurts to other members like a brother who has done wrong to his sister, or a father who has done wrong to his wife, or a mother who has done wrong to her daughter. This is reality. Kesa may kuwan nak experience na niyo nga naluod mo or nasuko mo, o nakahimo umugdautan no sa imong iisuon, o sa imong papa, sa imong mama, diba? That's pamilya. Grabe na no nga ginatawag na experience. Ngano maday, ang kamatuoran pa sa family ma okini, letter A, no perfect family. Walay pamilya nga perpikto no na ata nagkuanta, na ata nagkinabuhay sa depravity obscene, diba? So dunay mga in-perfectness, ah ah inaccuracy no improper no daghan nga mga butang atuang ah ma violate. Magitinoon muli. Ni mulayas, ugtag kuwan, tagisak simana, grabe. Tungod siguro kay dunay guy grabe yod ang ah effect sa ihaso mga pangitabu sunod sa pamilya, diba? Okay, so it's because there is no perfect family. But if there is no perfect family, in other reality, there is an ideal family. So di matlak pasar sa perfect, dili lang ta sa ideal no nga family. Apan unsa man na ginatawag na ideal family? Okay, an ideal family is the one where every family member's heart is ruled by Christ. Nganyong ato infases there si Christ man. Why, why do you not call plainly God? Why Christ? Because Christ, because siya ma tangingalan nga God with us di Emmanuel. No nga mo uban na to, God with us, desi ang pagkatao diba? As we celebrate Christmas, Emmanuel, it means God with us. Okay, dili lang kay he is with us, he is living in our hearts. So that is, it requires faith. Na tuuhi, no i-invite si Kristo, nga mapuyo si mo kasingkasing, morol si mo kasingkasing, then adonay da kong changes imong ang kinabuhay kung mahitabuk kanas ya. So kung amatag membero sa pamilya, ang ilam akasingkasing gi govern, gi rule by the Lord Jesus Christ, kay sanis ya sa mission si Gino oh, nga morol sa tong kinabuhay, then magiging ideal ang ato ang family. Maka experience O God. Aon during conflict, every member has the magic words. Ansa mga magic words, I'm sorry or forgive me. Kunaan na siya, then healing of relationship in the family is so fast and easy. So mga magic words, so apan niya gina ginasulti sa kuwan sa mga gase seminar din ni no, kana ga apply of marriage. Og dili lang sa mga couple, diya sa family good mismo, kining magic words dapat naanis ya. Modelo lang ang parents. Ang mga magic words is ah I love you, I care for you, no I'm so proud of you, muna siya. Ang isa pod, forgive me, no I'm sorry, I was wrong, muna siya. Kung ato na siya ikategorize, ato ikategorize ang I love you, I care for you, I'm so proud of you. Gitawag ni siya nga sparkler sa family. Sparkler, kalamo spark ba, diba nindot kayo? Mga Christmas lights eh ang gaspar, diba nindot kayo ato ang pananaw sa palibot kay dunay gaspar? No kini pong kuwan, kini pong kining awards for nga magic, I love you, I care for you, I'm so proud of you. Kung imuling ginasulti, gina gina-practice ni during sa dunay family members nga maka-achieve, o sa din na na honor, o sa din na i-appreciate ni mo, adonay is gan'tawag na gaspar diya sa family, nindot kayo siya. Okay, kini pong I'm sorry, no I was wrong, forgive me, ma opunay ginatawag na fire extinguisher diya sa family. Na kung dunay mo sila ob, na kaini kalayo sa kasuko, then ang nakasala, I'm sorry, sorry kayo, sorry. Maunis ya ang mo extinguish, mo ni mo palong, diya diya dayon. So diya sa pamilya, dapat dunay sparkler, dunapoy fire extinguisher. Mga magic words, very practical siya, no nga kung i-practice lang, effective kayo. No kay kitang tanan, kinalantaw og appreciation. So dunay appreciate na yon, tanan din na no mo spark na yon, nindot ang atmosphere sa family kung dunay sparkler. Okay, o ya layo sa danger ang family is a fire of conflict kung dunay extinguisher. So very practical siya. So matag membero sa pamilya dapat makakaton on sa magic words. Magic ba kanan dali ra, diya diya dayon abundant, dili siya crisis. So hurts are real experience inside the family. Second, parenting style, o sa may ginatawag na parenting style. The upbringing of a parent from the family of origin had a big impact to their parenting style toward their family of procreation. So duha kalasing pamilya, family of origin, second, family of procreation. Ang family of origin, katong pamilya nga di intanag dako, pamilya sa tong papa og mama. Ang family of procreation kanang ato ang pamilya, kanang nagminyo na ta, nagkaroon tag atong kaugalingong pamilya, mo na family of procreation ginatawag na siya. Okay, so natural, natural nga ang parenting style sa atong papa og mama, sa atong ginikanan, maoy katong ilang nakuha sa family of origin. So kung dunas咧 family of procreation, ang parenting style ang ilang himuon, katong ilang nakuha silang ginikanan. Kung giyonsa sila dito, pag disiplina, kung giyonsa sila dito, pagpadako, ma opunay yang implement automatic man na siya. No nga yang maoy yang style sa iyang family of procreation. Okay, natural na siya. Now, o sa may mga effect ni ini, letter A, children's capacity of understanding. Children must understand that if who their parents are is the byproduct of how the way they were brought up, either positive or negative. O sa man is papang himunal man kayo, o sa man is si maumay ilang nadakkan. Diba ang ang mga papa sa una, dili tanan no noon, magginikanan sa una, magmasoko, onsay magunitan, ma ibunal, mabangko man, maduspor dos man, kasi unsa ma ibunal. No niya na sa una, katopang mga kaliwat pagkatsila bitaw, grabe kayo kuwan, muna. Oga ako amigo nga pastor, mo niya na experience yang papa. Grabe good, asta karoon ginabati niya dire ang sakit siyang likod, kigamay pa siya, gibunalan siya og bangko. That's kasuko ba, imba'ta mago kay na pagkakulit, badlungon, des kasuko sa papa ah onsay nagunitan, onsay na adias sa duol maoy unitan, ma ibunal. So grabe ang antos niya din eh. Karoon dito na sa Bible school, dunamay ginatawag na bondage breaking seminar. Na kanang imong kaagis gamay ka pa, mga hurts ni mo anang tahuana, labing imong papa, dili mawala na, kanunay ka, kanunay ni mo minuduman, maglagot ka niya. So dapat i-deal ni mo na siya, no nga mawala na siya nga dili nakabati on og kuwan. Kay kung dili na siya madil, ma opunay himuon nga ah kuwan, ma unay foothold no? Ma unay himong kapital ni sa tanas nga, wa kay kalipas imong ginikanan. Hurts, imong mahimduman nga na siya ha. Okay, so tungod niyato, no ako ang amigo, namdri sumo ang gagiyag ka kuwan nga eskwela. Ning uli ko siya kagayan, iya gyonggyatobang yang papa, pa. Tinuol lang pa, na akoy kasko ni mo. Di dyo ko kalimot katong imo kong gibunalan og bangko nga ato karoon, na diro, na ipiangko tungod kay mo ni resulta. Pa ma kamehi mo pa kay papa ta ka pero na akoy kasuko ni mo tungod niyato. Labing na og magngulungol ng ihang dire, na ipanong magngulungol ihang likod, asuko siyang pang lagot siya. So papasailo ako pa, lasay ko nga imo ha kong kikuwan, gibunalan tungod sa kong pagka, kay pagulo, pagkakulit sa una. Okay, o ah sa imo ha pod, wala pod kay kuwan siguro, basta kay maka disiplina maora. Pero bisan atungod niya na subra no ang imong pagkuwan. So pasailo ako pa, nakareless pa yang papa, no kay katong tungura, kuwang ko siya kahadlok pas Gino oh. Karoon nga nareless niya, nangayos siya pasailo siyang anak, nagpinasailo ay sila, grabe ang healing process. Sa karoon wala na sila nindot kayo harmonious kay ilahang pagpuyok. Okay, nga namang nga nakahimunal pod yang papa, natingala siya, kay di ay ay yang papa ma opay na experience siyang lolo, nga grabe kay mo munal. Siya narra. Okay, so dili tamatingala, anong maumunis siya, maumago ilang nadakkan pod sa una. Then, ikaluha sa letter B, parents' humility. Parents who realize that their parenting style from their parents is no longer effective in these modern days are humble enough to change it. So kamus naman kita mga parents karoon? Kung ang atong ladakkan na disiplina sa tong mga ginikanan sa una, o niya implement atos tong anak karoon, modern day na, dili na effective, ipaday nagyapon na to, bisag di na effective. Ang atong ginikanan sa una nga nagdisiplina na to, nga ilarang style, wala sila 'yung mga child psychology sa una. So karoon, atong implement na siya, dili na effective, kay lahi na mga bata karoon. Ato lang yapong ipadayon atong parenting style, masinili na effective. We must be humble enough, atong i-change, unsa may effective, labas na mga itagkaalam si Gino, Lord. Kining, kung i-implement ako ang giyonsa ko pag disiplina sa kong ginikanan sa una ko, i-implement ako karoon, dili na effective, masi samutog kadungol akong anak. Mandui ko Lord, onsay maayok karoon nga klasing disiplina nga may effective sa kong anak, og ma mold ang iyang kinaya. So we must be humble enough to change it. Magginikanan, maoy akong naandan, maonay, di ma okay akong. Okay, wala ba yata 'yung mga child psychology sa una, ato mga lolo, mga lula, wala to sila, sa tuwa karoon nga naana, diba? So ato ang i-change ang ato ang ginatawag na parenting style, kay para ma avoid ang mga hurts diya sa family. And then it is easy to ah get healing, kung dunay nagkakitaabu diya sa family. So ang pamilya maoy basic nga unit sa susyudad. Og ma okini ang gi-establish si Gino oh family, hinuman na tuwa, o sa gani ang gi kamadas Gino oh bulabogon podi sa tanas. Kay gi-establish niyang family, o sa poe, o sa poe trade strategy ni sa tanas karoon, pagbulabog sa humankind ang pamilya. So that's why magiging awareta no sa matag isa, sa family, kanabitaw ang gitawag na ah serioso. Sabitaw sa kalamay na 'yung mga kuwan dire diya seminar, ah baka nag mga applicant sa marriage. Pero sa imong tana ta, asaman mo mapuyo, humansay nyong kasal, morag ka balo. Dito rampuyos ng papa, dito rampuyos ng ugangan, ana morag, wala bitaw, nga dapat unta, mo minyo ka, na nakay trabaho, na kay balay, prabedan ka ba? Karoon wala. So moral na bitaw og kining, moral na bitaw og ilang morag, duwa duwa lang. Ha basta kay minyo minyo no, moral na ilang huna huna. Pero kanang sineryous good, nga dunagay perspective, silang family, nga maonay ang pamilya, wala kayo sila ha. So hinaut nga kuwan, hinaut nga by the grace of God, kita nga ato ang ikuwan, ato ang itulo sa tong mga anak, what it is no to be a father and to be a mother. Grabe nga, responsibilidad kay si Gino oh, ang itaw na parental responsibility. Okay, o niya ang pag mold sa batasan sa mga anak, tungod kay kundili kanas siya ma mahitabo then ang gitaw na mga hurts nga may experience sa family, it is hard to have reconciliation no kung tanan no? Kung tanan ang nagpeeral garbo, wala guy reconciliation mahitabo niya na. No pero kung dunay ginatawag na ah humility, then it is easy to reconcile. Bisan realidad nga di malikayan nga dunay hurts nga mahitabu sa pamilya, why problema no kay madilra siya? Tungod sa ginatawag na ah character nga andam nga mapasailo. So hinaut nga kung dunamay mga hurts nga na experience sa matag family o kita biklima ni ini, hinaut nga ang atong kasingkasing andam no, siya tawag na pasailo. Forgiver nga to sa matag isa. Para ang Gino oh malipay gayod no sa atong kinabuhay o sa atong family. Okay, so dera lang kutob ang ato ang lesson karoon, ato'y entrust diya sa Gino oh, atong na learn this morning. Thank you O Lord for the lesson we have learned today. Thank you O God for reminding us that family, you are the one O God who ordained family, and even marriage O God. We are just participating O Lord whenever we settle down in marriage. But it is our prayer Lord that ah you may help us, continue to help us Lord, to do our parental responsibility towards our children. Because we cannot do this Lord alone, we need your grace O God. And it is our goal O God that in our marriage and in our in our family, you will be glorified O God. So Lord despite of reality that hurts is a real experience inside the family, but Lord we pray with your working, we can be able to achieve reconciliation through forgiving one another. So for us O Lord as parents, help us Lord to be model of forgiveness. Thank you O God and we pray that this principle will drive us as we continue to handle or to govern our own families O God for your glory and honor. Continue O God also to bless each one of us, especially your people, the legislators who are going to have session today. We pray for your guidance and your wisdom Lord God to govern each one of them, to come up a right decision for the continuous progress of the municipality of Epeel. And we pray Lord for your continuous protection and provision to ah every family member of Epeel LGU. We entrust to you our lives into your mighty hand for your safekeeping and blessing in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen and amen. Mayong buntag sa atanan.
Good morning, everyone, to our visitors and other employees of this local government unit, especially um employees of the Vice Mayor's Office and the employees of this Sangguniyang Bayan. The 68th Regular Session of this Honorable Sangguniyang Bayan is now about to commence. Ah please, may I request everyone to please rise for the entrance of the official maes of the Sangguniyang Bayan, the entrance of our Presiding Officer, the Honorable Vice Mayor, Ramzes Troy D. Olegario, and of course, our Sangguniyang Secretary, Madam Estanita Igia.
Hello. Good morning to each and everyone. The 68th Regular Session is hereby called to order testing our Hamuldi Piti Media Personal for the Sing of the Philippine National Anthem. Um please be seated. I'd like to request our Madam Secretary for the role.
Okay, good morning to each and everyone, and welcome to the 68th Regular Session. Uh, Mr. Chair, it's obvious that only five are present out of twelve, so there is no coromie.
Okay, considering that there are only five members out of the twelve, uh, members of the twelve Legislative Council, the Chair would like to declare a fifteen-minute recess while waiting for the address to come. Honorable Wenefred Chong and the Honorable Seraphine Ramos, the Chair would like to declare that there's a corom. Session be back to order. Um, Mr. Floor Leader, for the adoption of the Order of Business.
Honorable Chair, I move for the adoption, the Order of Business for today.
There's a motion for the adoption of the Order of Business. Any second to that motion? Julie Sarandet by Honorable Sabihan, discussion? Any amendments, any objection? I mean, the motion is here by approval. Mr. Floor Leader, for the visitors are?
Honorable Chair, I move for the suspension of the rule to accommodate our visitors.
The rule suspended to accommodate our visitors for this morning.
Honorable Chair, we have here our first visitor in person of Armida Perater. Ma'am, Armida Perater? Are you around?
Yes, uh, ma'am Perater, you're now recognized.
Morning, ma'am.
Good morning, ma'am.
Please occupy the rest room.
Everyone?
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the SIL Forum Sibugay is honored that you have given us the time this morning to be the first, no? Although I was complaining, diba ang first na may nauna? Ang amo amang good priority, pero I know that I am prior, geta ga ang priority because I am already SK, saktong katigwangon. Anyway, so I am here to represent the SIL Forum Sibugay to present to this august body our proposal of putting up the Harmony Post of the SILSILA Forum, ah not SILSILA Forum, but SILSILA Dialogue Movement of the whole, no, Philippines. And it is even um adopted in the UN, no, United Nations, because this is already a Republic Act, a mandate, a Republic Act 10525, which is ah declaring the first ah week of February of every year to be celebrated by all agencies, institutions, and private entities. So here, trying to look back into the introduction of why we have this concept, remembering the past experience that we have had in early seventies that we were the victim of the Ilaga and Baracuda trouble, encountered, wherein many of us were here, no? And because of that, there were many who were displaced and even killed, no? It's so sad to know that there were lost lives in that very encounter. And going, moving on, in 1995, there was a massacre that everybody really were so displaced and even very, that that was miserable experience. That when we had that massacre, some of our police, no? Not only them, but there were many who were burned that time, no? And because of that, we were trying to have the celebration this, because that would be this coming 2024. This would be the fortieth anniversary of the SILSILA Dialogue Movement, wherein we have to have a very concrete um concept or symbol here in our province, specifically in our town, to um build or put up a harmony post, wherein we, regardless of our cultures, religions, and tribes, we have to put up a unity concrete symbol, and that would be a harmony post. And I am proposing also that it would be built and be posted, planted in the former place where the police posts, where they were there very excited to accommodate those visitors, DSG members na pala, and there were shoot and there were killed and even burned. So that would be a very meaningful place for us to have a harmony post there, in that particular place, wherein um at this, that would be 1995, how many years na ba? Um, more than a decade, no, two decades that had passed, that we have to move on, magpadayun ta. And this will be a reconciliation area, wherein we could meet each other, taas noo tayo na, regardless of what religion we have. And uh, ma'ng tana mo nga no, because I am connected with the SILSILA, wherein the the main thrusts is really to establish the culture of dialogue path to peace. So by this, we are trying to have um deeper relationship with the Christians, the Muslims, and of other living faiths, no, mga lain-lain mga religion, mga lain-lain mga, so also with the Timoais and everybody, no, different cultures. So by putting up that harmony post, wherein we can gather together in one of our ceremony or in one of our activities, maybe it will be very meaningful, tingali. And I think that's all.
Okay, any uh, any words or any clarifications come from the body?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, the Honorable.
May I have the floor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, ma'ng uta na na ho kay ma'am Perater?
Yes.
What would be the post looks like?
Ah, it's a pyramid, I think. I, I was, I was bringing with me the picture, but I supposed to, diya anta, no, makita. But then it would be a pyramid, wherein there, in that pyramid, there are four corners, four east, west, south, north. And then here, we will be having the pyramid there, pointing up there, because it would be, ah, the meaning of that is the centrality of our faith, that we only believe in one God. We have so many different ways of believing and praising Him, but we have, we do believe in one God. And we are working and moving toward that.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair? Uh, the, the plan of the SILSILA is so good not only for us today living, but for the children of the next generation. Para ilan ka ng marackonize?
Yes.
O ilapun na makita unsang effort gihi mo sa ilang forefathers, no? Uh, everything that we are doing in this community is not for us who are, who are already in the Twilight Zone age, but for those children who are aiming for the betterment of this municipality. Second, Mr. Chair, may I know from, from uh Perater, uh, her intention in coming over this regular session, I think is for a res resolution, ma'am?
Yes. Yes, because we approached the mayor and she said that we need, she called up the municipal engineer and the engineer came and he said that one of those requirements, we have to have secure an SB resolution or our denials that would be attached to our letter of intent of building, of putting up that post.
So, Mr. Chair, that area, I think, is part of the National Highway. If ma'am, if ma'am Perater would agree with this Sangunyang Bayan, aside from the SB resolution, what's that granting this SILSILA to put up a Harmony Post and a resolution addressed to the DPWH from this honorable body?
Yes, yes. It's good that the Honorable Toralba brought the idea of that certain portion belongs to the National Highway. Because as you could observe, the development of that certain portion that the road naputol tungod kay of that very siguro significant lugar before 1995 abus ayaw attack, if you could remember that diha ang police post mo nang, and then Alpha Phi Omega, napusay development and nahimu diha. So might as well, before we grant that resolution that you're asking for, maybe we could refer this matter to a certain committee para malantaw na tuba. Okay, morag naputol mo ng development diya para sa dalan. And as we could observe, traffic, dihan napita, morag nagkakuwan na, siguro high time naput, siguro atong i-discuss sa Sangunyang Bayan nga. Kana nga certain portion, siguro basi gi atras na lang gamay no? Morag di po na to, makuwan nga naput ang mga sentimental ng valuan ng area. But puhon, kinahalanan, di po na siya gamitun nga mahimong dalan. So, ma'unyang atong i-discuss, three sa Sangunyang Bayan. That's why I would suggest na marefernisya sa committee para, for, with regards to the use of that certain area.
Mr. Chair, that was even the reason why we were asked by the DPWH to have that for this matter. And we were trying to, the mayor really suggested, because we also consider as group because this is not only solely, because the SILSILA here is the umbrella wherein it cover the IRD, the Inter religious Dialogue Group where we have also here and we have also the E-Mouse volunteers wherein we suggested, when we have that plan, we already consider that our municipality is really progressive and that there will be even an overpass will be built, no? So, kanang dili ba ang among gi plano po na dili ma, maagian, dili maka disturbos sa development? That's why we really need your help and cooperation.
Okay. Sige, before anything else, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Susi Jane Garcia and the Honorable Sharif Mazinasi. Good morning. Okay, any further? Honorable Chong?
I speak. I think, Honorable Chair, the purpose is honorable and it will help enhance further the slogan of the municipality. Ipil safe, Ipil strong. So, I think to make it more substantial in referring to committee, I think we should first pass a resolution and refer it to the committee for proper deliberation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Chong. Anything else? Any further discussion before referring it to a certain committee? The Honorable Farida Dampalan?
In addition to ma'am Perater's, saang tuyo, karong buntag no? Let it be known nga, last year, I have made a privilege speech about the SILSILA Dialogue Movement. And I'm very proud also to say that the first program that SILSILA Dialogue Movement made in Ipil was by declaring Bangkerohan as the Harmony Village, Harmony Zone for Sambuanga Sibugay. And that was during the time when I was the barangay captain of Bangkerohan. And many programs were made and siguro panahon napod nga, we could help the SILSILA Dialogue Movement nga matukod ang Harmony Post. And usani siya sa symbol that the dialogue, dialogue in Sambuanga Sibugay, especially here in Ipil because dirigyon nag sugod sa atuas sa Ipil ang SILSILA Dialogue Movement from Sambuanga City. So, Honorable Chair, I would be very much supportive of this action that is to be made here in Ipil.
Thank you, Honorable Farida.
Thank you. Anymore? Mr. Floor Leader?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, the Honorable Toralba.
On the other matters, we will pass that resolution and may I move that the Honorable Farida Dampalan will do the honor in passing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
I think I have to thank everybody for your, I can feel it, heartfelt support of our cause to be united. The harmony is to harmonize all of us. So then by its, the meaning itself really can already be felt by everybody that soon we will be one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next visitor, Mr. Floor Leader?
The next visitor, Honorable Chair, in person of Alistair Galito, Jude Capasio.
Okay, good morning.
One of the designation, one of the 10 outstanding Boy Scouts of the Philippines. Please take the rose room.
Okay, good morning, sir. You're now recognized.
Good morning, everyone. Once again, na napo good day. But today, I am not here to ask but to give thanks for your support, morally, financially. And also, I would like to announce that I have finally won the 10th, I am one of the 10 outstanding Boy Scouts of the Philippines. And the experience was very exhausting yet very fulfilling since I have learned many things during the activity. I have truly showcased the talent of Sambuanga Sibugay and the talent of the municipality of Ipil in the said national event. So, there was no said ranking, but I am one of the 10 and I was called the 7th. That was very kulba kayo kay last upat na lang. Then, hey, masuludun ta. And thank God nakasulud ta and that would be all. Thank you very much.
Okay, before anything else you would like to?
Congratulations.
Congratulations and I'd like to ask any one of the members of this Sangunyang Bayan to pass a resolution commending our very own as one of the top 10 Boy Scouts of the Philippines. So it's such a great honor for the municipality of Ipil and siguro maybe in the part of other matters. Next visitor, Mr. Floor Leader?
Honorable Chair, I think we're through with the visitors' hour. There's no more list here, list of visitor.
Okay, so?
Proceed to Privilege Hour.
Okay, may we proceed with the Privilege Hour, Mr. Floor?
Back to order, Honorable Chair.
Okay, session be back to order.
We are now on Privilege Hour. Anybody from this honorable chamber who wishes to avail of the privilege? Please raise your hand. Is there anybody who wish to avail of the privilege hour? Please raise your hand. I think there's none, Honorable Chair.
Okay, may we proceed, Mr. Floor Leader, with the reading of the minutes of the previous session?
Honorable Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the previous minutes of our session.
Okay, there's a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session. Any second to that motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Nuega. Any objection? Hearing the motion is here by approval.
Honorable Chair, I move for the approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Okay, there's a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous session? Again, Julie seconded by the Honorable Juan Pablo Nuega. Discussion? Any amendments, any corrections that you have observed? Any objection? Hearing the motion is here by approval. Madam Secretary for the Reference of Business?
For the Reference of Business calendar and first reading, under the proposed ordinance, we have draft ordinance number 131, sponsored by Honorable Seraphin Ramos, an ordinance enhancing the operation of his landing centers in major fishing barangays of Ipil.
Honorable Chair, pleasure, yes?
I move that this be referred to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances.
Can you refer this matter to Committee on Rules and Ordinances?
Under other communications, item A, duly endorsed from the municipal mayor, a copy of the MOA to be entered into by and between LG Ipil and the OST for the implementation of community empowerment through science and technology for the municipality of Ipil.
Your pleasure, the body. Other matters or why not do it now? When this, on this period, yes? Would like to do the honor? Approving the memorandum of agreement?
I move, Honorable Chair.
Okay, there's a motion presented by the Honorable Nuega for the approval of the content of the said memorandum of agreement? Is it your intent for the approval of the content of the said MOA? Okay, any second to that motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Sabihan.
For clarification, Mr. Chair?
Yes, the Honorable Toralba.
The MOA of what, Mr. Chair? For clarification?
The OST and LG Ipil? Implementation of community empowerment through science and technology for the municipality of Ipil.
Is that, Mr. Chair, may I be clarified if that is so urgent?
Yes, I would like to ask the proponent, the Honorable Juan Pablo Nuega.
To polish that MOA, Mr. Chair? Let that MOA be referred to a proper committee?
Okay, would the honorable proponent would like to withdraw your motion?
Honorable Chair?
Okay, may we refer this matter to Committee on Rules?
Rules.
Okay, refer to Committee on?
Rules and Ordinances.
And Ordinances.
Okay, item B, duly endorsed from the mayor, again, the free patent application applied by Ms. Lea Ferolino over a parcel of land containing an area of more or less 331 square meters situated at Puruk Pagasa Sanito.
Your pleasure, the body. Mr. Floor?
Honorable Chair?
Yes.
I move that this be referred to the Committee on Land Use.
Okay, refer to Committee on Land Utilization.
We are now on the Committee Report, sir.
Committee Report, Mr. Floor Leader?
We're now on Committee Report. Is there anybody from this honorable chamber has Committee Report? Please raise your hand. Or shall I begin with Honorable Ramos, any Committee Report?
Hello, Chairman? Thank you. I was tasked by the chairman of the Committee on Appropriation to render report absent. Committee on Appropriation, Committee Report number 216-2020 updated November 8, 2023. Subject, proposed executive budget fiscal year 2024 of the general fund amounting 420,279,050 pesos on municipal economic enterprises, the amount of 18,270,000 pesos. Our remarks and recommendations. The Committee on Appropriation, to which was referred the annual budget 2024 for review and approval. A committee meeting was called and after thorough deliberations, the committee heard the comments for the approval of proposed executive budget fiscal year 2024 of the general fund amounting to 420,279,050 pesos on municipal economic enterprises, the amount of 18,270,000 pesos. I move for the adoption of the said Committee Report.
Okay, there's a motion for the adoption of the said Committee Report. Any second to that motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Ian Glenn Sabihan. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing the motion is here by approval.
I hope that this, that the proposed budget for 2024 will be calendered on the second reading in this regular session. So, I move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a motion that this annual budget for 2024 be calendered for next regular session for second reading?
Second reading.
Okay, any second to that motion?
Mr. Chair, before it will be seconded, may I move for recess, Mr. Chair, for two minutes?
Okay, recess for two minutes. Honorable Toralba?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would justify why I ask for a recess before it will be seconded because it is already the executive budget of this local government unit and yet that was not thoroughly discussed before this honorable chamber. So, may I, Mr. Chair? If the Honorable Ramos is amenable, that we will discuss that matter. It might be, there are still proposed plans that was laid on the table before the office of the chairperson on the Committee on Appropriation. So, I would throw this suggestion to the floor if the members of this honorable chamber would rather agree with the suggestion of this humble representation being the chairperson on the Committee on Rules. It's up to the body, Mr. Chair.
Your pleasure, the body. Considering that the Honorable Ramos passed a resolution for recommending it for second reading in the next regular sessions since nobody seconded it yet, therefore, the Chair would like to declare that it is a dead motion. Nobody, since nobody seconded to the motion being presented by the Honorable Ramos.
But, Mr. Chair, I ask for a, before it will be a seconded? But still, Mr. Chair, I asked for a uh before it will be a seconded.
Yes, yes.
Uh I asked for a recess and now it uh the the session is ready resume. Session is back to order, so it's up. You may you may call it again, Mr. Chair, for a second of that motion of the Honorable Ramos. Anyway, uh things will be discuss on the second reading during the discussion period. Let the uh let the uh secondment of the committee report of the Honorable Ramos be done, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so any second to the motion? Seconded by the Honorable Noiga. Any further discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing that the motion is here by approval. Anymore? Committee report, uh Mr. uh Honorable Seraphine Ramos.
No.
For consideration, Mr. Chair, was that committee report uh set for second reading on the next regular session?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more committee report on this honorable chamber? Honorable Noiga? Honorable Apit? Honorable Sabion? Honorable Garcia? Honorable Hasim? Honorable Farida? Honorable Turalba?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a committee but I have no committee report at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, better with the committee report, Honorable Chair.
Okay, madam madam secretary, no business being calendared?
Uh for the calendar business, we have business for the day, calendar and second reading. An ordinance creating the position of one utility four months, a grade six, step one, under the mido and appropriating funds thereof. This is the continuation of the discussion.
Okay, so it's a pleasure of the proponent.
I saw, Mr. Chair.
For the approval for second reading, any seconded motion?
Second.
Julie seconded by Honorable Dangpalan and Honorable Garcia. Discussion? Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have we have we already discussed this in the previous regular session.
Yes.
And all the questions that I uh that I put to the to the budget officer have uh answered. So, I have no objection to this uh proposal. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Amendments? Any objection? Hearing that the motion is here by proof for the second reading.
Mr. Chair, and let that matter be calendared for on the next regular session for the third and final reading.
Okay, any seconded motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Garcia. Discussion, objection, hearing that the motion is here by proof that this ordinance be calendared for third and final reading on the next regular session. Other matters? Here we go.
Uh, resolution.
Uh, yes, uh may move for the suspension of the rules, Honorable Chair.
Okay, rule suspended?
May move for a resolution, um requesting the DPWH through the office of the municipal mayor to allow to grant or to allow Silsila Silsila Dialogue Movement establish a harmony post in the heart of some of Ipil, Sambuanga City Bugay. Provided that this would not be an obstruction to the development of the uh projects of DPWH.
Okay, any seconded motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Apit Mahmad. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing that the motion is here by proof. Anymore? Uh before anything else, uh I can see uh one of the observers, visitors for uh visitor for this uh sixth eighth regular session, the person of the newly elected barangay captain of Lower Tawai. Ma'am, good morning and congratulations, the Honorable um Malu Banlog. Ma'am, good morning. Thank you for coming and observing the proceedings of this uh plenary of this uh legislative council of the municipality of Ipil. Okay, anymore? Other matters? Other concerns? Yes, the Honorable Susi Jane Garcia.
To suspend the rules.
Okay, rule suspended.
Okay, I would like to pass a resolution. A resolution commending our uh one of our boy scout representative in the person of Alester Galieto Jude Car- Capa- Capasio of barang- from barangay Tiayon as chosen as one of the ten outstanding participants during the the scouting of Boy Scout of the Philippines at Manila.
Okay, any seconded motion? Okay, Julie seconded by Honorable Sheriff Mazinasi. Discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing that the motion is here by proof. Napa? Okay.
Chair.
Yes, the Honorable Seraphine Ramos.
Uh, would like to kung siguro kisim ka'tubak ang pagtatanan to. Kaya ang kining gaisano scheduled to open their uh business establishments by November 10. Onya, nagrequisila for the kabang ejeckment of informal settlers there uh kepaing in front. Di ko kebalu pilan kapopaturo ng boga. So, we already depasser resolution to the mayor, the previous session, and also to the DPWH. So, ako kebalu konsai status ano karon, konsai uh tubak sama nga banato. Kay, kwan kining ya paras ako will give priority. Kining problemane kay, di gusto ko ne. Tatwir add it so much income to the municipality of Ipil. Onya, maka create per job opportunities. Dengan wadi manatunik tutukan. Uh, di di gaisano is willing to to pay the informal settlers sa konibawan, moro 100,000 masuro.
Okay, sige considering that uh the past regular session, the Sangguningang Bayan passed a legislation address addressing the concern to the honorable local chief executive and to the Department of Public Works and Highway. So, um we'll just wait for their uh uh proper action on that certain matter. Considering that this Sangguningang Bayan already passed a resolution.
Pero, agusto na't it should be immediate action. So, pagkakaroon dun na ne.
Yes. Yes, that was the timer of that.
Onya, konsa may naitabo dito sa ground.
It's already in the hands of our uh uh local chief executive.
Kwan sila, open sila. By this time, oh tomorrow, ano na. It's an ibiobma.
Yes, yes.
Honorable Chair.
Yes, Honorable Chong.
I agree with the plight of Honorable Ramos. Tanantagustog, action rin so, labi naggalagot ha. Pero, ang ang problema, the law forbids because there should be illegal procedure before any action.
Okay.
Only the court, ang ang nahibal ano, pwidi magharas ri, ang korte lang harass. Order sa korte, onya, through the implementation of our police force, morgunasya. Kukumpara sa ato, kung kita'y mabungka dito, nadautta.
Idugan na nagpadadatang notice, marks, marks pa. Anto karo, papagapapagapansila dia. Kaya dia demanding so much amount.
Yes, yes, I.
Maka-maka discourage ba sa mga kwan ba?
Yes, as much as we'd like.
Big time, ah businessman nga mugsulud ri sa tungso.
Yes, yeah, we understand your plight and we do have same sentiments with you, Honorable Ramos. Kita, I think kita tanan all of us, no? All Ipilaniyas have do have the same sentiments over that matter, but yeah, it's not it is not within our hands anymore. So, paabot na lang da silang actions.
Nagyako, nahibal oh kona. Na it will be the DPWH swi- 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 have the right
Yes.
to to execute the plan of ba ejectin- ejecting dusa illegal parts through the sheriff.
Yeah.
Through the sheriff.
Yes.
Di manatumatek niya, ano.
Yes, I think I think this is not.
Ato dinga, buldos na, ma dimata ma dimata, peryani mayor Moreno. After after sending trindutis isana, buldos reyon.
Okay, so so much with that, I think we've done our part, no? As far as this Sangguningang Bayan is concerned, so. Anymore? Other matters? Other concerns? Okay, anymore? Other matters? Other concerns? Before malimot malimtan? Before the year ends. And then, can you give us the update? Okay, before the term would end, the Honorable Susi Jane Garcia. Okay, would like to ask the Honorable Garcia if uh any updates on the Sangguningang Kabataan federated elections? So that would be up, the body would be update be updated.
Uh for now, Mr. Chair, ongoing ang SK mandatory training, they nagfinalize me sa mga documents sa with the ILG. Wala pang schedule nga final.
Okay, so we heard that the
Tentative.
Yeah, the tentative date would be on November 14th.
14.
As announced by the provincial director.
Oo, wala pa'y final dyan.
Okay, so that's tentative pa dyan. Okay, so anymore? Anything else? Any updates? Oh, yeah, yeah, our heartfelt congratulations, Honorable Susi Jane Garcia for being elected as one of the Sanggunion uh barangay member of the barangay lower Ipilites, Tiro Babira. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Napa ba? Honorable Noiga?
Congrats, Honorable Chair.
Okay, there's a motion for the adjournment of the sixth eighth regular session.
Second, Honorable.
Julie seconded, the sixth eighth regular session is now adjourned.